Good evening. It's seven oh two P M. Monday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty five. This is a regular session of Athens City Council. Before we get into our meeting, I'd like to read an acknowledgement. I'd like to start by acknowledging that here in Athens County, we live and work on land initially settled and developed by earlier people, particularly the Shawnee and the Osage and those identified through cultures commonly known as the Adena, Hopewell, and Fort Ancient. This acknowledgement reminds us of the importance of honoring history, people, and the planet as we work to improve our city's legacy. The first thing to do is to establish a quorum. I see five members present, and that gives us a quorum. Next is the disposition of minutes for the regular session of Athens City Council held June second, twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Next is the special session of City Council held June nine, twenty twenty five. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion of second. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Next, we'll move on to communications. Do any members of council have a communication they would care to share? We'll move on to officials, Law Director.
Yes, I do. I wanted to let you all know that I've been contacted by the Ohio Municipal League, and the Municipal League asked the City of Athens and others to sign on to an amicus brief, which is a friend of the court brief that's being prepared by the City of Columbus in support of the City of Cincinnati, who is defending a lower court ruling regarding standing to bring a taxpayer lawsuit. So a taxpayer lawsuit is when a taxpayer has a personal stake in the outcome of a situation involving the city. Perhaps they've asked a law director to do a specific thing and that affects them. The relator in this case, his name was Mark Miller, he sued the City of Cincinnati and claimed that he had standing. He didn't have a personal stake in the outcome, but that he had standing. The lower court ruled in favor of the City of Cincinnati, but the case has been taken up by the Ohio Supreme Court. And that's why the Ohio Municipal League has asked for other support. All we have to do is give our moral support, basically. We don't have any financial obligation in this. But this is kind of a direct quote from the Ohio Municipal League that it would be a disaster for municipalities if the Supreme Court reverses that decision, since it would allow anybody to say they don't like a program or expense if the city can sue to end it. So it's significant. Right now, they're hoping that the Supreme Court will affirm the Court of Appeals' decision. So later on, if the City Council is interested, I think that Member Reisner, who's President Pro Tem tonight, may have a motion for council to consider. Anyone have any questions on that? I think it's pretty much self-explanatory. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for taking that on.
Administration.
Yeah, I have a few items. Just wanted to congratulate the city and the organizers for the Boogie on the Bricks this past weekend. I thought the event went very well. A little bit of rain in the middle, but that just cooled things down a little bit. So it was a very nice event. I want to announce that this weekend, on Saturday, is the twenty twenty five firefighter safety stand down. That's the twenty first, from ten to two at the Athens Community Center. It's for firefighters. It's about firefighter mental health and wellness, and it's free and open to all firefighters. Member Claude Felter is going to attend on behalf of the city and read a mayor's proclamation. So thank you, Member Claude Felter. And we've had some discussion in this body about the new community authority and the movement to create that community authority between Ohio University, a developer, and the City of Athens for land on the ridges to start the new ridges development. And we were waiting on the Controlling Board. Today, that agenda item was on the Controlling Board's agenda. I have not heard about if there were any hiccups. Hopefully, everything went smoothly. But I am pleased to report that it did appear on the agenda today. And finally, this Thursday is our Juneteenth holiday, and there will be a community celebration on the campus green from three to six P M. Includes lots of tabling and excellent local organizations, and includes a kid activity zone, so bring the whole family. And that will result in a street closure of Union Street from noon to seven thirty. I believe that's from Court Street to University Terrace. From approximately noon to about seven thirty, there will also be a concert under the Elms event that evening, so you can go to Juneteenth and stay for the excellent music. That's all I had. Thank you, President Pro Tem.
Thank you. Acting Mayor, Crowe. A question.
Just a follow-up. Regarding the Controlling Board decision, I haven't heard it either, but Joe Recchi is going to be presenting tomorrow at noon in City Council chambers to the Affordable Housing Commission to talk about that. And hopefully, since he hasn't told me any bad news, hopefully, he's got good news. And he's going to talk about the next steps and what they're going to do to actually build some housing units out there, which we certainly need. So up to maybe seven hundred housing units. So if you're interested in that, please come tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer, anything? Okay, well, it takes care of reports and communications from other elected officials. We'll move on to ordinances for a third reading. The first one is ordinance sixty-three dash twenty-five. An ordinance amending the twenty twenty five appropriation ordinance, authorizing the auditor to make inter-fund transfers, amending ordinance one forty-five dash twenty-three that authorized construction of the new fire headquarters, project number three forty-six, and declaring an emergency introduced by Councilmember McCary. Member Thomas?
Thank you. I'm just going to read through the changes that are being amended here so that we can get all the numbers. In section one, we are, twenty twenty five appropriation ordinance is hereby amended by appropriating from unappropriated balance three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Safety Services Fund two oh six, thirty thousand dollars to Capital Improvements Fund five eighty. In section two, we're amended to decrease the General Fund Fire one oh one two oh eight supplies and services by twenty-seven thousand and increase General Fund Fire one oh one two oh eight for transfer by the same amount and decrease General Fund one oh one one twenty, other administrative supplies and services by twenty-five thousand and increase General Fund one oh one one twenty, other administrative services for transfer by the same amount. Those are spelled out, then down in section three. And in section four, for our total amounts, we're going to amend for the Service Safety Director authorized to expend up to fourteen million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand. And then the additional amendment is down below, and it is now to nine million, nine hundred thirty-two thousand from City Service, excuse me, Safety Services Fund Fire for land purchase and site preparation. And those are all the amendments.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, can I have a motion to adopt? Mark, can I move to it?
You can move it, yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Discussion?
I do have one question, and I just must have read this too fast at home preparing for this. What's the difference between the fourteen million dollar figure and the nine million, nine hundred thousand dollar figure? What is that?
It's the additional money. We just did the five hundred and thirty, the twenty-five thousand, and the twenty-seven thousand.
That doesn't add up to nine million. I just don't know where that nine million number came from, as opposed to the fourteen million.
Well, there's three hundred and fifty. I'm sorry. You're right. The Capital Improvements Fund, those additionals. Yeah, I guess we did this a few weeks ago, and I forgot. It's been a little while.
No, that's okay. I'm not.
So we amended the appropriations I read, but then, in addition to that, there was the previous three hundred and fifty thousand up above and thirty thousand,
Yes.
which brings the Capital Improvement Fund to a total transfer of five hundred thousand. And then, you're saying the difference.
I'm like, I'm in this section, on page four. There's a fourteen million, three hundred fifty-two thousand dollar number that has been amended to that. And then, two paragraphs below, or one paragraph below, there's a nine million, nine hundred thirty-two thousand dollar figure. And I just wonder what the relationship is between the two. Deputy Safety Services Director, do you happen to know?
Looking at the ordinance itself, it appears that
Oh, you're down in the.
In section, so there's section three of, well, section four, section three of section four here. So the Service Safety Director is served by authorized to expend up to thirteen million, four hundred twenty thousand dollars. It's been amended to fourteen million, three hundred fifty-two thousand dollars as follows. So there's three million, six hundred seventy thousand dollars in the general fund, seventy thousand dollars from ordinance eighteen twenty-two for planning preliminary engineering, six hundred thousand dollars for designing construction management. And then amending below that, nine million, nine hundred thirty-two thousand dollars from Safety Service, from nine million dollars to nine million, nine hundred thirty-two thousand dollars from Safety Service Fund to a six two oh eight to include six hundred thousand dollars for land purchase.
Okay, so that nine million, nine hundred thousand dollar amount is part of the fourteen million amount. Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to confirm.
Yeah, I was not explaining that very well.
No, that's okay. It's not your fault. I just, it wasn't clear to me on here.
Member Wood.
Similar question. I thought we were discussing something on the lines of seven hundred and fifty thousand. This looks like it's actually a nine hundred and thirty thousand increase, though. The nine million goes to nine million, nine hundred.
This is the email.
That includes the art, work, and the fitness court.
Correct if I'm wrong, and I probably am, seven hundred and some thousand dollars is the payment that goes directly to Pepper, the final payment, and the two hundred thousand dollars for the cost overruns for the various other sundries that were included into the project later. So that would total up to nine hundred thousand.
Okay.
I just want to add, I mean, I'm still, I guess the polite term is, you know, upset about the whole thing, inclined to vote against it. I don't like it. I don't like how it's done. The administration isn't, you know, here to, the mayor isn't here to talk about it. The answers from Director Stone, when we asked about it, were pretty flipped. I, you know, it's stuff we probably would have done had we been asked, but the manner it's coming back now, I'm bare minimum going to abstain. I don't like it, and I don't think it's good.
Okay. Member Claude Felter.
Question again to the Deputy Safety Services Director. What would happen if we don't approve this?
If it's not approved, we still are obligated to pay for work that's been completed. The finding of money to do so becomes much more difficult. I don't know how we would be able to do so with the appropriations as they are currently. Regardless of feeling on how work was performed, contractors do have, you know, we have an obligation to contractors to pay them for work that they've done, whether that's, as stated in the communications, additional parking lot paving, that work has been completed, it's done. The people that did that work got to be paid, I would think. Same is true for, I believe, there was a comment about the percent for art. That, if you look at the change orders that go back to the very beginning, I'll back up a second with the parking lot. I think that was under change order number two. There were five change orders that occurred. So change order two was very early in twenty twenty-four, I believe, toward the beginning of the construction. And so I guess I'll leave it at that. Essentially, you know, regardless of how the work was performed, it was performed, and we do have an obligation to pay. If we don't, we could run into some other challenges. In the state of Ohio, for example, you know, small contractors aren't left holding the bag from the non-payment, that they would go against the bond that's part of that, and that would be pretty painful.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Where all the funds are coming from? They're coming from Fire's budget in different areas and moving to this repayment. They're not coming from other general fund areas or anything else, correct? That's, I'm reading that correctly? And it's, and from the capital fund. So it's not coming from anything else where it could be spent elsewhere without having to come through and be re-appropriated through unappropriating and then re-appropriating. And I understand, you know, Member Woods's thoughts, and I think we discussed it a couple of weeks ago, but, I mean, Deputy Chickie is correct in that these people are going to get paid at some point or need to get paid, and they don't have anything to do with this discussion necessarily. But it is all coming from Fire's budget. They're reducing their budget in other spaces, and the capital fund and the mayor's administrative office is reducing their budget.
Okay, one more.
Yeah, I have no problem with the contractors. I have a problem, again, with the change orders being created and the extra work being created without approval of this body. The fitness court and the extra paving were not brought up, were not approved, and folks decided to do it anyway. And so, yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's the nut of it, and we don't have to approve it. We didn't make that decision. So the, that's the end of it. And I don't think the Fire folks should be shorted either. I think one of the things that was brought up was the Firefighters Association. You know, Chief Reimer mentioned when we were talking one day that the leading cause of death for firefighters is suicide. They deserve every accommodation possible. And so, you know, taking this out on them and their fund, again, is a foul on my hand.
One more, and then we'll have a vote.
So I just, just to clarify, if we don't approve this, they don't get paid, or at least not for an extended amount of time. But also, the Fire Department is who spent this money.
But also, the fire department is who spent this money. They had to do with this building plan, and all of these things came out of their department. Like, the fitness court was part of their plan. We did talk about it, it came up in pass last year. The parking lot was probably a in-between, but they were aware as a department of this, just to, I think, be very clear in how the money gets spent and who comes up with the plans. But if we don't approve it, I don't know how that goes on. I guess we pay what we have and then we have a bad bond reading and go forward.
Yeah, it would not be good.
Okay, this will be the last one.
You know, I, I hear what member Wood is saying, I, I can appreciate that. I, I do have to say though, that as I thought about this, since we had initially had that conversation, there was a lot of concern from some members of the community about whether they wanted to have this fire station where it was and, you know, people came out and complained about this, that, and the other, which is, you know, everybody's right and they had different issues. I think that there was a great interest in making sure that there was space for physical activities, sports, sporting events and whatnot. And in order to do that, you would really have to have a parking lot and add those parking spaces. My guess is that if we waited to do that later, it would probably cost us more and be more complicated than what we're going to be paying for now. So, you know, I, I hear that, and on the other hand, I think it's, was probably a wise decision, is how I feel about it. So I, I think it's okay.
Mr. Treasurer.
Okay, Treasurer.
I'll, I'll jump in just for a minute. What member Spilnis said is, is very accurate. Mr. Chickie would agree with this. Director Stone, in doing these projects, has stressed that when, when the city sees the opportunity to expand on something at a much reduced rate, so to speak, it's within our best interest to do this. Your point is correct, better communication along the way would be helpful. To put this project in perspective, you are correct, we're, what, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars is what we're asking for more. Now, we need to factor in the fraud, okay? We cannot ignore that, that's, so put that in a factor. Even if you want to take that number, that is six point nine percent over the original thirteen, thirteen point four, two million that we projected. If you do a simple Google search and you look around at construction projects all around the municipalities, seven percent, very standard. To be under ten percent is actually really good. Our swimming pool, when we actually looked this up because I wanted to look and see, our swimming pool that we did however many years ago, seven percent over. It's almost impossible to do these projects. The number that we start with is what the engineer says, this is what you're going to do, this is what it's going to be. But that number, correct me if I'm wrong, is, that's like in a vacuum, that's in perfect condition, that's saying that we're going to do this. There's, there's a little bit of a, of a leeway, but when you get into the project, there's always something, right? There's always going to be something, and as a result, you're going to run over from time to time. Your point to better communication is something worth learning from moving forward. I think it's well worth saying. As for this project, when you factor in the fraud that happened and the simple change orders, if you, if you take out the fraud, you're at about two percent overrun, and that's really good. And that's adding things. So I, I, I think this project actually came out pretty well at the end of the day. It, it does require a little extra money, you're not wrong. I think the, the mayor's office did a good job in saying, we're going to take from the capital, the bulk of this money is coming from the capital budget, the capital, the capital fund. And that's money that could have been, that they might have wanted to use for a project here in the building, but they said, we're going to use it for this because, honestly, I think the sentiment was, we're going to use it for this because we made some changes and we're going to just deal with it. That's my two cents on it, is that while the project did go over, it's actually not any of our outline with almost any other project you're going to find.
Okay, call for a vote. What?
And we do need five votes for the emergency clause to go into effect.
Well, let's hope we get five. We've had a motion and a second, we've had discussion from practically everybody in the room, except one notable exception, never mind. All those in favor of adopting ordinance sixty-three dash twenty-five, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Point, point of clarification, abstention, does that count as a yea or a nay?
He can't abstain.
There's no reason to abstain, it would be, you abstain if you have a conflict.
Yeah, but I haven't heard a nay.
You should have voted yes or no.
Yeah, again, I mean, I think we would have approved these things had they come up to this point. And I do think that your, your point is corrected, you know. And my heartburn is not about the, the fraud. Again, I've said it a couple of times, I think people were unduly harsh on the person that made that mistake, and I think there should be some theories there. I think, again, my issue is with the choices made by people to just sort of plow through.
I think you made that point well, all right.
Yea. Oh, see, I count five affirmative votes. Thank you. Ordinance sixty-four dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending ordinance one twenty-one dash twenty-four, authorizing twenty twenty-five staffing levels introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee, which I am the chair. Just to refresh everybody's memory, this is changing a position within the mayor's office. The amendment is changing the DEIA slash training coordinator to a different position of community engagement and accessibility coordinator. I will make a motion that we adopt sixty-four dash twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of adopting sixty-four?
Can you adjourn here and input the community?
I asked for it.
You said discussion.
Yeah.
And you said administration.
Lesson, please. You're up there, say what you need to say.
Percent of that didn't happen last week, which is why I'm here today.
Oh, good.
I'm Michelle Han, I live at seven seven four West Union Street in Athens, and I'm here as a member of the disabled community, a member of the Athens City Commission on Disabilities and a co-chair of its Outreach and Communications Committee, as well as the commission's representative to the Pedestrian Accessibility and Bicycle Task Force. I came last week to deliver this message at the previous reading, but that was not followed normally, and it was very disappointing. So I'm here again to pass along some information that the administration needs to hear and the council needs to know to keep things on the right track.
You're keeping the time.
With the change of the job title to include accessibility coordinator, we are glad to see we are finally trying to come into partial compliance with one subsection of the Americans with Disabilities Act Title II Regulations, that is subsection thirty-five dot one oh seven. From the minutes of the Finance and Personnel Committee, it sounds like the new job description will expressly have, and I quote, "more focus on the city's commission on disabilities", end quote. The commission only heard about this through the grapevine, though. That's disappointing as well. So a request for whoever in this room or wider streaming audience need to follow through, the job description should include an expectation to complete the ADA Coordinator Certification Program provided by the Great Plains ADA Center. And of course, the city foot the bill for that certification if the incumbent does not already possess it. The commission is thankful that we are moving forward in a positive direction with this, and please don't forget to keep us in the loop, communication all around, a really good thing. If this is something that's going to be involving us, then we should probably be involved in knowing, at least knowing about it. We're not invisible, I don't think, I think you can say, we're bright pink just to be sure you could see me today. But I, there are plenty of us to answer questions, provide recommendations, and make Athens the best version of itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out there? The other three, any comments? Calling for a vote, all those in favor of adopting sixty-four dash twenty-five, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Sixty-four dash twenty-five has been adopted. An ordinance amending ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-five, the twenty twenty-five appropriation ordinance one fifteen dash twenty-four. And, excuse me while I call it up here. The amendment, just to remind everyone before we vote, is that the section one is amended near the bottom with the following, fifteen thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents to internal fund, eight sixty-five, transaction code six hundred, for transfer and increase the total appropriations by said amount. So, I believe we've had a second, haven't we?
I don't think you moved.
Well, I should move somewhere. I'd like to have a motion, oh, I'll make a motion to adopt sixty-five dash twenty-five.
Second.
Members of council, administration, treasurer, audience? All those in favor of adopting sixty-five dash twenty-five, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, it's been approved. I'm now going to read ordinance of our second reading. The normal procedure is that they are read if the person who is in charge of proposing it has anything to say or make any comments, they can. As far as I know, there's no suspension of the rules?
No.
Very well. Ordinance sixty-six dash twenty-five, an ordinance granting a special right-of-way use permit at seventy-five Kimes Lane to maintain existing signage in the city right-of-way at US fifty and North Blackburn Road, introduced by council member Swank, who is absent tonight. Ordinance sixty-seven dash twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the extension of Kenny Drive as part of the Public Safety Training Facility, project number three seventy-three, introduced by council member Thomas. Ordinance sixty-eight dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending ordinance one zero eight dash twenty-four, authorizing design and construction of a public safety training facility, project number three seventy-three, introduced by council member Thomas. Ordinance sixty-nine dash twenty-five, an ordinance affirming an easement from the state of Ohio as grantor to the city of Athens, grantee, necessary for the construction of the State Route six eighty-two slash fifty-six roundabout, project number three fifty-seven, introduced by council member Spilnis. Ordinance seventy dash twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for issue one funds and to execute contracts as required, introduced by council member Ordinance seventy-one dash twenty-five, an ordinance granting a special right-of-way use permit at one zero seven and one zero seven and a half each state street to allow continued use for the residential parking on an unused city alleyway, introduced by council member Swank. Ordinance seventy-two dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending ordinance fifty-seven dash twenty-five, construction of the Columbus Road Shared Use Path, project number three sixty-five, introduced by council member Spilnis. And that concludes all our second reading ordinances. We have a one reading resolution. R zero three dash twenty-five, a resolution appointing a new member to replace a citizen member vacancy and reappointing a citizen member and a local government member to the Board of Trustees of the Ridge New Community Authority and declaring an emergency introduced by all council members. Is there any member who would care to speak to this?
I think I can.
Very well, member Spilnis.
So basically, we have had, the person, Dominic Brook, who worked for Ohio University, is resigning from this position as a citizen member of the board. And in his place, we would like to appoint James Kaufman, who is the new, well, not quite so new now, several months, Director of Real Estate at Ohio University, to fill the unexpired term of Dominic Brook. And the council desires to reappoint Chris Nysley, whom, of course, we all know, as a citizen member, and Andrew Stone as the local government member to successive terms on the board, which will expire on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-seven. Then it goes on to talk about a matter of selection, blah, 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 this and that. You all, I hope, had a chance to read this, and it's, you know, pretty standard stuff. But now that, hopefully, the new community authority will be in charge of making sure that this land that is being transferred to the new community authority can be developed, we need to have some strong people, and this just makes a lot of sense.
Do you care to make a motion to adopt?
Yes. Yes, I'd like to move that we pass this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion on resolution, administration, law director, treasurer, public? We've had a motion and a second, all those in favor of adopting resolutions zero three dash twenty-five, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. We now move on to announcements and other business. I would like to hear a motion to accept the April twenty twenty-five financial reports.
Submove. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the April twenty twenty-five financial reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Next is a motion to accept the March twenty twenty-five credit card transactions. Do I have a motion?
Submove. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Now I would like to make a motion, as explained by the law director earlier on, a motion to join the city of Columbus Amicus Brief in support of the city of Cincinnati for the reasons that the law director had so clearly explained. Do we have a, I've made a motion, do we have a second? We have a second from member Spilnis? Discussion? Very well, all those in favor of adopting this motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. It has passed, and law director, you have your motion.
Thank you.
Next, we have opportunities for citizens.
Special session.
Oh, I better mention this, yes, we are going to have a special session tomorrow evening at seven PM here in council chambers. I don't think I had to say anything more about it, I haven't seen the agenda, so we'll get that out. I was afraid of that, yes. So, a special session tomorrow evening, seven PM here. Now, opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered by the agenda? Okay. I'd like to hear a motion for adjournment.
Submove. Second.
We've had a motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, we are adjourned at seven forty PM.